Well, we're making it.
Ladies and gentlemen, before we get started, one more time, everybody take yourself off the office. Correct? All right. Does anybody wish to speak on any of the agenda items today? Does anybody wish to speak on any of the agenda items today? Is this all the agenda or are you going to speak? You're good. Anybody want to speak regarding the agenda items? I'm not really... Sir?
Thank you, Virgil. We're good.
We're here.
It's gonna be a long one, isn't it?
Good morning, sir. One more.
Your microphone's on? Your microphone? Sit down? Yeah.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the extension place. Make sure yourself on top of your hallway.
Yeah. Yeah. And they... And they did send a representative, the one we was talking about a while ago, there's gonna be some... No, it's gonna be good. We're good? Okay. Thank you for being here this morning. If you'll stand, we'll be led in on my pledge of word of prayer by Commissioner West and then remain standing for our pledges.
Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Help us use these blessings in a way that will glorify you. And your Lord, be with our country today as we're swearing in a new president and new group that will be taking over. Please make it where the transition will be easy and that our country will not be lost. Be with our commissioners today as we go through the list of items before us and help us make the right decisions for Van Zant County. Dear Lord, be with all of our enforcement people wherever they may be and keep them out of harm's way for this. Dear Lord, we thank you so much for this day and help us enjoy and be glad in it. In these things, we pray in your son's holy name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor to the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Van Zant County Commissioners Court Wednesday, January the 20th, 2021 at 9:04 a.m. Announced quorum is established with all members of the court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meeting of the Commissioners Court approval same for January the 6th, 2021 and January the 7th, 2021, and they are not available at this time. Is that correct? They're... So they'll be on the next meeting, Susan? Okay. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted.
Some of it...
Got a motion by Commissioner West.
Second, Pearson.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Is there any questions or discussion about the bills that's been submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying county bills as submitted for payment. Some of it... Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner LaPride. Any questions about the ratifying of the county bills? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number five, general business, is any general business we need to be made aware of, brought to our attention? Any announcements or anything from anything? I can see Dan getting ready.
Judge, today we have Ms. Michelle Arseneau, she's our Texas Association of Counties Human Resources consultant, and she will be here in the county. We're gonna do FMLA training for supervisors at the sheriff's office at 11:30, and then we will be here in your courtroom at 2:00 p.m. to do FMLA for supervisor training for any elected official supervisor, anybody who would benefit from that training. So two sessions, and we'll get some great training today.
Okay. Thank you, Dan. Is there any other announcements? General business? Being none, we'll move to public comments. Scott, did anyone sign up for public comment? No one signed up, and Joe asked, no one signed, so there is no public comments. We'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider approving signing the opioid settlement allocations term sheet. Van Zant County had entered into a suit against the opioid makers. And this been going on for, I don't know, three years now, two, two, three years? And we do have a term sheet that they have recommended that we sign in the allocation. Van Zant County would be receiving $248,747. I did have a couple of questions going through it. The Smith County judge was very, he was part of the negotiating, Nathan Moran, and I called his office and they were, and he wasn't in, so I talked to the county attorney for Smith County and talked to him, and we worked through it. One question I had was, does the attorney fees come out of that? You know, the agreement we signed was attorney fees coming out of that settlement. No, they're getting it, you're dealing with a federal, you're dealing with a state. So that is what we would receive, is the $248. Was any, another question I had was the regulations. Okay, once we receive the money, is there any reg... Regulations that we have, certain ways we have to spend the money for? And they said, no, it's yours to recover the cost of what the opioid has cost Van Zant County. That was the two questions. I had sent it to Tonda, and I didn't get a response, but to review it, Tonda, you may have reviewed it, and...
Yes, Judge, I read through it. It's a, it appears to be a typical settlement in a large mass litigation like that. The numbers, the landing numbers appear to be, you know, how it's usually done.
Yeah.
And it all appeared to be...
Okay, thank you. I felt like it would be, and I called and talked to them and everything, and it, and we're not nailed to that. I mean, if we sign that, it says, okay, from my understanding, it puts pressure on the state of Texas to say, you know what? You need, you need to share with the counties and stuff and everything. So you're not, you're not nailed to it if we vote to sign this term sheet. But my recommendation would be to go ahead and let's approve signing the opioid settlement allocation term sheet.
Sir?
Got it? Okay. I got a motion by me, myself, second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion about it for Tonda or myself? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and approve reapplying for the VOCA grant to fund the Victims Assistance Project for the 2021-2022 term. That's a grant that the DA's office gets, that you may address the court.
Thank you, Judge. This is the grant that pays for the Victims Assistance Coordinator in my office. Melissa Cheney is currently filling that position and doing a very, very good job. It is a 20% matching grant. Our 20% comes from paying her benefits, her fringes, her insurance, her unemployment insurance coverage, those kind of things. Other than that, it doesn't cost the county anything out of pocket. They cover her salary, her office supplies, her travel and training. They cover absolutely everything, we just pay the fringe benefits. So we're, we need a resolution, it's grant application period, and we need a resolution from the court ass, approving that we apply for this grant again. I believe this is maybe our ninth year?
Been several years, we've had it for several years.
Many, many years, yes. Far predates me. Yes. But, so we're just asking that the court continue the program as it's been with the same level of commitment. It'll of course be next budget year, but the same level of commitment in covering her fringe benefits.
I make a motion, we reapply for this and we authorize the county judge to sign the resolution.
Okay, it's got a signature for all the commissioners also, the resolution does.
Oh, sir.
And so... Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner LaPride. Is there any questions or discussion for Tonda? It's a great grant.
It is.
I mean, it is a great grant, and it's very much needed.
Very much needed, it makes our full office so much more effective to have her just dedicated to the victims.
Yeah. I do have one question. She didn't want to come represent?
No, Judge, trust me, I got two texts this morning. Don't forget.
Yeah.
Are you on your way?
Yeah. She stood here last year like passed out. She was so nervous and she almost passed out, just doing what Tonda just did. But, great, great, yeah, we got a... We have a motion as second, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider approval to allow sheriff's office to sell vehicles that are no longer operational or safe to use. We're gonna need, they're in the hall. Yeah. Yeah. Here's this.
Hey, Sheriff. You're up. We just called for the selling of the vehicles?
Yes, you should have a list as part of your packet. On that list, there's one vehicle, which is a 2018, and I put that on there because it is one that the insurance company has paid for, and I just wanted to make sure we didn't need to get some kind of permission to release it to the insurance company. So that's why that's on there. So the other vehicles are all vehicles that have basically way extended their life. Previous administrations have robbed these vehicles of parts. They're no longer to be fixed. The value of them is far less than any amount to fix these vehicles. We located, I think, four of these vehicles back in a back lot that were just fenced in, been sitting there for years. Several of the others are just, like I say, inoperable. And I know several of you guys came over, commissioners, judge came over, and we kind of showed you the situation, and so we're asking for permission to sell these vehicles and get them off the books, get them off insurance. Every month, we're paying interest on these vehicles, and they're of no value to us. The hope is to get enough money out of those vehicles and then the insurance claim to purchase two new vehicles that we can put back out on patrol and have some reliable vehicles.
Now, what do you, what were you saying about the one, about the insurance?
The one that says totaled, number 2108, it's a 2018 Tahoe, was involved in a head-on collision. And basically, it's, interest is paid for, they're wanting to come pick it up, and we just wanna, I didn't know what the process was, being new sheriff, but we didn't get permission to release that to them from you guys, or it was just okay to release it.
I know you get Christy, but I think they can just come get it. I don't know why they wouldn't.
Just wanted to make sure that it was...
I believe they can just come. I know it's sitting out, we've seen it sitting there.
Yeah.
I think they just... Once they get permission.
Did the auditor's office ever account for all the vehicles out there?
No. There, and... How many vehicles were, are still missing from what you guys have and what is actually?
At least there were the ten, the handful of vehicles. We had one, because one of the officers would have been the county judge, and right before the county go, we called and had a prior, something had come up, and we never could go out there. So we went and tagged the vehicles that were actually on the lot, there were sixteen of them on the lot. We have to be four vehicles in all that we have to account for, so we accounted for sixteen of them.
Now, we've got an updated list.
I offered the sheriff my help, once they get, I talked to Lieutenant Pitts, and once they get on their vehicle, get ready to move one out of the car.
We've got a current list, too, that we're gonna do. For the ones that's been turned in, the ones we've located, we had some at people's houses that it's been returned. We believe we've recovered everything we can recover, that was not, you know, she was unable to find. And one thing we're doing from here forward, we've got a maintenance program in place. We're keeping good records on every vehicle, and the maintenance is done on it, the repairs, and then when we see a vehicle that's high mileage that we're spending more on than what is worth to us, and that's when we're gonna come to you guys and say, hey, we don't have permission to dispose of this vehicle. Having adequate maintenance is gonna extend their life. Like I say, we're holding people accountable. We're no longer just allowing people to go buy stuff in the auto store and do what they want to do. We have a program in place, and they have to get permission, authorized to make these purchases and make these repairs, and you get this maintenance done. And we're ensuring that it's just done in a timely manner. So I think you'll find that our vehicles will last longer, they'll look better, they'll operate better, just routine maintenance, so they're in your vehicle at home.
So when, I think the comment was, they robbed the vehicles. It might not have been the right word.
Maybe not the right word.
Removed the, they did remove...
They removed a lot of parts and used them to fix other vehicles, and, I mean, it's...
Yeah.
Oh, you've seen it.
Yeah. And so... Is there any questions about these vehicles? I think Sandy has went over this list and everything, it's been...
The 2018 Tahoe that is total, I had released the title to tag, and we put John, Joe Copeland has, is supposed to be sending out someone to come get that.
Yeah. So there, I don't think there's a problem with them picking it up. I mean, they've already paid us for it.
Okay. Like I say, I didn't know what the process was, I just wanted to get y'all's blessing on that.
Yeah.
And all of these, it's just not cost-effective to try to do your repairs on them.
They're also an asset.
I make a motion, we allow the sheriff to sell all of these with the exception of that 2018 Tahoe, which belongs to the insurance company.
Okay. Okay, that's a motion from Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner West. Any other questions for the sheriff?
Only other thing I've got, and I'm sure y'all know that, but they've all gotta be de-dejayed. Yeah, we can't, I think state law changed, and we can't sell anything that's got marked.
Yeah, that's, we're already aware, and we're gonna take care of that. I think even the spotlight has been removed now, so...
Any other discussion? Being none, we have a motion as second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Item number 10, discuss and consider approval of expense of $12,000 for outside audit of evidence room.
Good morning, gentlemen.
Good morning, Erin. You may address the court.
Thank you, may I approach?
You may.
And Mr. Yawson, if you can refer to this. Thank you. All right, gentlemen, just to start off, I'm gonna tell you what a property and evidence division of the agency should be. It should be a place where deputies can bring property that they accrue during the course of their duties throughout the day, be it for safekeeping, something that's found that an owner cannot be identified, or an item of evidence for a criminal case. It should be an area where we are accountable for every item that's given to us, where every item has got a document to back up its existence with us, why it was picked up, where it was picked up, and ultimately, where it's going to go. Y'all have either visited the facility or you've seen pictures, that's not what's down the road right now. The documents alone, when I walked into that office, there were literally stacks upon stacks of paper all over that office. Any system that may have been in place was haphazard of vest with documents that are necessary that were scattered in with a bunch of extraneous material. And it's taken me all of three weeks just to go through all of those piles, pull out the important documents, and put them in some kind of workable order so that I can use them for research. Research for the items that we actually have in our possession. And gentlemen, those items, I can't even tell you what all is in there. The evidence room has not been purged apparently for years. It looks like a hoarder's scenario, and there are many things that I physically cannot get to. We should be able to go in and pick up items, have a document that says, this belongs to so-and-so, this is where we got it, this is the documentation for that, and it's just not in existence right now. That puts the county at liability, not just for criminal cases that will need to be adjudicated down the road, but it puts us at a liability because I'm not sure that we can give people their rightful property back, and that's a constitutional right that people have. So far since I've been there, I've already had notification of about a dozen different people reaching out to me saying, you have some of my property, I want it back, and at least one of those persons has already said, you know, if I can't get it back in a timely manner, I'm gonna be seeking legal assistance. What I'm here today asking you gentlemen for is for financial assistance to fix that situation down the road so that we can do what we're supposed to do, so that we can account for what we have, get it back to its rightful owners, or destroy it if it's contraband, put it through the proper processes. I have obtained an estimate from a gentleman named Mr. Sean Henderson, who owns a company that does just that. They train people in property evidence management, and they go to agencies and they help them fix their problems. He just recently came back from Baltimore, Maryland, Baltimore Police Department. So he's helping them fix their issue. He came in on the first of January, looked at what we had in order to give us an estimate on what needs to be done, and his words were, emergency triage. This county needs an emergency triage system. He's written up a proposal, that's what I've actually passed out to you gentlemen to look at. The total for his services that he's asking for is $12,000. That comes in three different phases. The first phase to come in, and again, assess what we have, help us lay eyes on the documents and the items, help me to establish some kind of a sustainable, workable system so that we can then bring this inventory to a manageable level and then stay on top of it. And then the third and final phase would be at the end of the year where he comes in and reassesses how we've done, what we need so that we can be up to par with best practices, so that we can be a functioning system down the road. And again, this is all in an effort to mitigate any liability that the county might see as a result of this bad system that's in place down the road.
Very good.
This is money that we don't currently have in our budget. There's not a budget item for this type of scenario. In addition to that, just a side note, we're still paying bills and receiving bills, and we're not paying all of last, not just this budget year, but the previous budget year, that we're just ignoring, throwing in drawers places, and we just weren't paying. And so we're not even sure what our budget is right now until all these bills are taken care of. And I venture to say that this is going to far exceed the 25% by law, that for that first quarter of this budget year because of all the past due invoices that we're having to account for now.
Sandy, were we gonna look at the budget and see if we could, is there possible ways to transfer money from one item to another?
We've been, and I have, a bit of a rast in this situation based on today. So my question would be, they do have two forfeiture funds, they have a sheriff forfeiture fund and they have a justice forfeiture fund. I was just looking as she was speaking, the sheriff forfeiture fund has $18,000, and their justice forfeiture fund has $25,000. This is a forfeiture item that she's talking about, so, you know, my question would be, can we use forfeiture funds to cover this audit? If not, Judge, we just have to look at our contingency line if we have to, aside from the budget from what you said.
Yeah.
I think it would, the forfeiture fund would more than cover it and legally cover it.
Yeah, or looking at the stages, stage one, two, and three, do you, do you have to pay the full $12,000 upfront, or do you pay as you go through the stage?
Per his proposal, it's paid upon engagement of services, so per phase.
Okay, because phase one and two would be in this current budget year. Phase three would be in January of 2022, that'd be in a different budget year.
Yes, sir.
But on stage three, it states in there, $4,000 flat rate, paid on delivery of final report, not on...
Correct. Correct, so I'm thinking we're probably looking at $8,000.
Probably looking at $8,000 upfront last quarter after we get the final report, when we get it.
That's what, that's the way I'm reading it. Tonda, you may address.
Yes, Judge.
Yes, sir.
Going back to the forfeiture discussion, I've got a order signed by the district judge awarding $23,000 to the sheriff's office in my office. I just need sheriff's signature, he and I have talked about it, we said we gotta pay for it now. But half of that is their money, so that'd be about $10,000, $11,000, something like that.
Okay.
That I could cover this, that I can get to him this week.
Okay.
So there is funds available.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, that would be good.
But there's other things, too, that we've got to do.
Right.
At this point, it's a bit frustrating to see what the previous administration did to the budget, the budget just didn't take care of their business. And so, you know, we've gotta get uniforms with these guys, we've got guys without ballistic vests. There's numerous things that's gotta be addressed, and not even able to use the money we should have had allocated in our budget because we're having to go back and pay bills from last year. You know, it's frustrating trying to find the money to do these things when the budget would have probably taken care of it. But, like I say, due to mismanagement and a lack of controls, now we're faced with, we're fucked a lot of the way.
Yeah. Sandy?
And we have, we do not have our FY 2020 budget closed because the collections have not came yet. So some of those bills shared that we gave all into the 2020 budget, I did have a payee put those back into that year for you, so that that would relieve some of the, are the longer 2020 budgets. We are trying to evaluate, because they want us to come in and put them in process.
Yeah. Okay. I don't know, I still don't know where it's coming from.
Well, what I understand Steve's saying is, now, I've planned to do some uniforms and things out of this, out of this forfeiture stuff, so if you, if we spend this $8,000 out of that, then he's probably gonna come back.
He will.
But I need some money for here for something else.
Okay.
So I, I'm, we're in a mess out there, and we all know that. And so, there's some tough bullets that we're gonna have to buy. And so, I say, well, I say we authorize this, my only question would be, is this a quote or an estimate?
It's a quote.
What's it gonna cost?
It's a quote, okay. I didn't want it to be an estimate, and then they come back... I, I didn't want it to be an estimate, and then they come back when they're all done and say, oh, I missed that estimate, it's twice that much.
No, sir, I apologize. No, he, he, he had an idea in his mind prior to Sheriff Henderson taking office. Then this gentleman actually came on the first of January, looked at what we had, and then prepared this. This is a quote.
I'm actually authorized this, and I can, I, I say we all look at the contingency, go ahead and take care of it, not short of other things.
Yeah, but Tonda's, yeah, and he is gonna come back, I mean, we know that.
And we're about to have the guys in black shirts that say sheriff on them to put them on the street. So it's embarrassing, but that's what I have to do right now.
Okay. Okay, I have no, I mean, that your motion?
My motion.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to take the money out of the contingency, to authorize that, then Tonda will get that money. They'll, they'll work that money, that'd give you some more there, but no need to, I mean, you're going, you're going to the contingency at some point.
That's right.
I mean, it didn't, nowhere around it. Okay.
Are y'all taking any optional services as well? The optional services, a lot?
No, sir, we don't need those.
Yeah, and I believe that stage three, to answer the question Commissioner West said, that, that 4,000 is strictly for that, that item. It doesn't, each one is staged, so it's 4,000 for stage one, 4,000 for stage two, and then if we don't use stage three, then that 4,000 would not be able to go.
But you want to remember, if you do three, you want to remember to put this in next year's budget is what we're saying.
And Commissioner Lepred, I'm sorry to further answer your question, it's not that we don't need those optional services. Those are things that I've either already worked on and have the majority of it put together. They're gonna be addressed, just not through Mr. Henderson and this company.
I also want to commend Deputy McLeish, she's done a great job of getting in there and diving into that mess. I mean, a couple times we thought we lost her there.
Yeah.
I would like her.
We're gonna tag you with a deputy.
So we do have a motion, was there a second? Tim, you second, Tim? Okay. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
I just want to thank you guys, thank the commissioners for, for your, your help and coming out and being interested in what we've got going on. And like I said, we want to keep you guys alive on everything we do so that you can see our struggles and our accomplishments.
Yeah, it's not just one of us, I mean, you got the DA's office, I mean, that property room, you, I mean, that's, that's, we look at it, that's y'all's. And y'all work good together, but thank, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Item number 11, discuss and consider tax assessor collector changing credit card service provider to certified payments. Ms. Stanbury, you may address the court.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners, thank you for inviting us here today and to speak to you about the changeover of processing, our credit card processing from GovPay to certified payments. Certified payments is currently used at other offices within Vanceant County. So I know we already have an agreement with them, so that's, that's a plus. Going with certified payments, the system is connected to the state computers, so that's a plus. We have a little swipe component that we use that's connected to our state system with a separate tab, so everything works simultaneous. It also stores it for five years, I believe, so like if you have a question about needing to contact a customer, you can go in there and it'll pull up their phone number, lots of good information. The equipment is provided for free, that's always a plus. They also provide information as far as pricing, what it's gonna charge the customer to process it. They have claims for our windows, which is always good. And the reporting is far beyond what GovPay, the current provider, offers. And I believe, I tried to research, we've been using GovPay for, I believe, even before 2013. And it's been down, you know, for more than 30 days at a time over the past, so we want to do better. And I feel like it is a, it's a good decision to get that since I'm in there new. Let's get this switched over and get it, everything in line now while we're, while we're doing that. So if you have any questions, I brought Joanne because she's more familiar with the GovPay system that was currently used. So she's here to answer any questions you may have regarding that.
Does anyone have any questions for Misty or Joanne?
I'm making a motion that we allow the Texas tax assessor collector change the credit card service provider to certified payment.
Okay, that's a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any fees, any?
The fee currently is around $3, even if you spend a penny.
It's a minimum $3 with the current company. The new company has a minimum $1, but that's all charged to the customer, nothing to the county or to the state.
Okay, that's right.
So the fee is a lot less.
And the equipment's provided at no charge to the county.
And I know, and, and you, you may explain to the commissioners, you said this one will be tied into the state computers, not, not the county computer where the other one was operating off the county IP address.
I think there was some kind of tie-in, I don't know.
It's a completely separate machine that we use now, it's the old dinosaur machines versus this one will be plugged into the state computer and go directly off of the website.
So it saves the customer money.
Saves the customer money.
And it still doesn't charge the county.
Correct.
Any other questions? Being none, we have a motion second, being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you very much, so much. Y'all have a good day.
Okay. Item number 12, discuss and consider the genealogy library year-end report. Ms. Asher?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have the report for you.
Okay, you may approach. Thank you. You may address the court.
Thank you. The Vanceant County Library of Genealogy and Local History is an offsite department of the Vanceant County Public Library. It's operated by the Vanceant County Genealogical Society. The society is completely responsible for the library, including staffing, maintenance, and funding. There are no paid employees and no county funds are received for the facility. All expenses for the library are paid using funds earned by the society. For a short overview of 2020 and library activities, we had a total membership of 213. We had 21 volunteer librarians who worked 615 hours, and we published a genealogy quarterly. In a normal year, the library is, has established working hours and staffed by trained, qualified volunteers. This certainly has not been a normal year. With the arrival of the coronavirus and shutdown of the nonessential businesses in March, the genealogy library was closed to the public. As businesses were allowed to reopen at a limited capacity that the, the society considered the possibility of reopening, but considering the small space that we have and the age of most of our volunteers and patrons, we decided to have the library remain closed through the end of the year. We have elected new officers for 2021, and the new board is in the process of planning to reopen the library in February. Our dedicated volunteers have continued to do research throughout this year on a limited basis through and answered requests from the public through our website and Facebook page. We are very much aware that the continued operation of our library is due to the support of the county officials. We greatly appreciate the support and cooperation the county has given us in providing the space. And the genealogy society and library was established in 1980, and we have grown in these 40 years, we're still in the same small space, and we're growing. And we have more research material and more equipment that's used to provide the service for the community. So anytime anybody comes up with some more space, we are certainly open to, to that. We deeply appreciate the support that you have given us, and we look forward to continuing a relationship with the commissioners.
Thank you. Any questions for Sark?
Y'all do a good job.
And that is?
You do a good job over there, I appreciate you.
Thank you. It's, it's been a hard year, not being open and still trying to provide some, some things for the public.
And they do, if you, they, if you go over there and you look at their building, they need a larger building. They do a great job, but they can't even display everything they've got because they, they have no room. Unfortunately, we have about five offices in the county like that. And Elvis, trust me, Elvis is a good spokesman for you. Every time he talks for me, he tells me how you need a larger building. And, and, and you do, I agree, but you do a great job. And we're always looking at possibilities.
We appreciate it.
You have any more room down there, Tim? The, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
I make a motion, we accept the report. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner Lepred, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion carried. Item number 13, discuss and consider adopt a resolution to designate authorized signatories for the 2020 Texas, that's a Community Development Block Grant Program Contract 7220480. I believe there is a Corey Richards present. Okay, to represent that, I know there's gonna be a, a lot of questions. Mr. Richards?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, welcome. You may stand there at the podium. We are on the discuss and consider adoption of the resolution to designate authorized signatories for the block grant.
Yes, sir.
And I did have my clerk call and say, there's gonna be some questions on this.
Right.
I could already hear some rumblings, and I thought, we, we're gonna need someone here to answer some questions. This is a, I believe, Fruitvale Water Supply.
Yes, sir, you're, you're the sponsoring agency.
That's correct.
You spot, you applied on behalf of the Fruitvale. They can't apply directly to, to the grant agency. They cannot directly apply for block grants, so they have to have a sponsor.
Correct.
Either a CDR account.
Okay.
So you sponsored their application back when y'all applied, then this is, you've already picked us to be the grant administrator, and this is the startup documents that are required of the grant. You've had block grants in the past, you used to work with a consultant called Mary Kay. Mary Kay then came to work for Grant Works, we've done projects in Van, the city of Van, we've done projects, we've got a current project, Brad Selene as well. These contract documents, well, I'm a former city manager, city administrator, the terminology in these documents haven't changed in decades. The civil rights policies, you know, you're sitting there, you're gonna claim April is fair housing month, we know full well it's not April. You know, so these are required startup documents of every block grant that have been done for the last 20, 30 years.
Okay.
So you've done these in the past with Mary Kay as well, so you, you, you've dealt with these same startup documents in the past.
Yeah, I think we did a little Hope More.
Yes, sir.
Water, we have two water companies that just alternate back and forth, Little Hope More and then Fruitvale.
That's the way most counties do it, they'll just set it on a rotating basis because you can only apply every other year.
Right.
And then now this year, they changed the rules to where if you've been funded in the last six years, you don't even waste your time on applying. Keep changing the application scoring criteria and all that, because these are competitive grants.
So now, now repeat that last part.
These are all competitive grants.
I mean, yeah.
They, they, these come up every other year.
Right.
On a biannual basis, but this year they changed the scoring criteria, that if you've received a grant in the last three cycles, then don't even waste your time applying because you're not gonna score well enough to be funded.
Okay.
So this, this changes everybody's, even these little water companies like that, they, they don't know what to expect now because used to they were eligible maybe every four years, every other cycle, and now they're being told it's gonna be in six years.
Six years before they're, and that was what I was getting to was, okay, because as usually was doing about a every two-year cycle?
They do it on a two, applications are every other year, yes, sir.
And I think the last time we didn't qualify or something, but, but, so it's gonna be, are you telling us it's gonna be six years now?
Yes, sir, it will, they, they, well, it will be six years before they would be able to qualify. Your other corporations, since it, you know, it would have to depend on when they were funded last. But it'd be six years before Fruitvale.
Okay, okay.
Yes.
So I know there were some questions about some of the documentation. Anyone have any questions for Mr. Richards?
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
And I know we have done these before, and there's not a whole lot of changing, but I think, I don't know that we ever really read what we're back in.
Yes, sir.
Before and read it, and it appears that the county has some actual liability in here and, and things that they're gonna have to do, particularly like on the Section 3 people, where we have to maintain a list of all the Section 3 people in this area. We have to find out what companies, you know, we have to educate companies on Section 3 people, help with employment, training.
No, sir, we, we, we do all the labor standards work.
I understand you're saying that, but that's not what this thing says, it says Vanceant County will.
Yes, sir.
Say the grant people will, and then, and that's what kind of.
I understand, I understand that, but we, we are, you're going to, you're going to appoint us labor standards officers in those documents, and we will handle all of that. We will handle Davis Bacon wage rates, all that sort of stuff.
Okay.
We are the labor standards officer. You've already, you, you will, you've already done the paperwork that says that we are, or you will do it at some point in the process, but we do handle all the labor standards.
Okay.
We do that, we do that with, we have to do that on every single grant. Because a lot of counties don't have that, you know, don't have that authority.
They were saying that we had all these things, you have to maintain the list and.
That's what our project managers do, sir. That's, that's what they do full-time.
Okay, that's what I needed to know.
Yes, sir, and like I said, you know, the, the fair housing thing is, you know, they're, and we will print that ad, but that requires an ad to be published in a newspaper in April, and we'll, we'll pay for that ad ourselves. But that, that's in your document as well, so. You won't have any, you know, and you're, you're right, you, you guys are officially on the hook for this grant, but you have all sorts of protection because you're, number one, we have to fail. Number two, the contractor that's installing the water lines has to fail. The engineer that's supposed to be checking the progress of the construction has to fail. So there's all kinds of people that would have to fail you before you would ever be liable.
Or is this a known evil here?
There's a whole lot of people that would, there's a whole lot of people that would lose their jobs if they fail you, let me put it that way. We, and the Grant Works has never walked away from a grant. We do, we, we've got 200 under project management right now.
And Mary Kay did a great job.
Mary Kay.
I mean, Mary Kay walked in, walked us right through.
Good friend, good friend of mine, and she still consults with us.
But she did retire.
She's, she's a, she's something else. Never saw her badly dressed anywhere, and I don't care if it was breakfast on a Sunday morning.
Okay. Second. We have a motion by Commissioner Lepred, second by Commissioner Melton to approve the resolution to designate authorized signatories for the 2020 Texas Community Development Block Grant Program Contract 2770480. All in favor, say aye. Okay, is there any questions or discussion?
We, we get to doing things through tradition a lot of times, and now that, this happens all through the county in unincorporated areas, but now we might think about something, now that Fruitvale is incorporated, you probably don't. But now we might think about something, now that Fruitvale is incorporated, you probably don't need us. You can probably get the city of Fruitvale to sponsor you instead of Van Zandt County.
I think that they are in that process because they, she was telling me earlier that they just started a, what, a property tax and a sales tax? Sales and use tax. And that was one of the, to do, to apply now, you have to have an audit. You have to be audited and you have to either have a property or a sales and use tax to apply. You know, Canton couldn't apply forever because they didn't have a sales tax.
That's right.
So now that, you know, so Fruitvale is just about there. So in the future, they will be able to directly apply themselves.
And you may introduce.
I just met her. She works with Miranda Harris a lot and I just met her today.
And she, and she's the contractor?
No, sir, she's this. She's with Fruitvale Water. She's also the city secretary on a volunteer basis.
Okay.
So that's why she knows about the city and stuff.
Okay. We have a motion to second. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. And we will work close with you guys.
You will work closely with a lady named Nicole.
I know there's a lot of signatories. I looked, I thought, I need someone here.
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's a truckload of signatories that we're gonna need to get. Some of them going through there, I thought, now, we just need to walk through them. Okay? Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of resolution adopting required. Oh, do we not vote? Did we vote?
We voted after you spoke.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay. We'll vote anyhow. We'll vote again. Or for the first time. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of resolution adopting required CDBG civil rights policy. That's part of the.
Part of the grant.
Yep, that's part of it. Of the.
Make a motion, we adopt the resolution, civil rights policy.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner LaPrada. Any questions or discussion for Mr. Richards? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month. That's what he referenced speaking a while ago. That helps cover part of the requirement.
Yes, sir. And we will post an ad in the newspaper.
Got a motion by Commissioner LaPrada, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of proclaiming April as Fair Housing Month, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Judge, I could call your office to set up a time for me to come back. I just live at Lake Tewaq, so it's not a problem for me to come over here. I do have a medical appointment this afternoon.
No, it's fine.
I've got a tax regimen, so I need to go on.
You know what, or feel free to invite me up there and we'll bring documents up there. To Lake Tewaq. Can they be signed on a boat?
There's a boat in my backyard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You may be excused. Item number sixteen, discuss and consider approve the appointing of the 2021 Board Members and Officers of the Van Zandt County Historical Commission. Is there someone here, other Mr. West representing?
When I went up there and when you had Sandra and Hope down here.
Okay. Was you gonna present that?
I will.
Okay, you may proceed.
Well, Sherry, you want to do that? Well, 2020 was kind of a weird year for our historical commission also. And we've been getting near the things done that we would like to do, however it was. We did a lot. We're getting ready to turn in another year-end report that's gonna be really good with mileage and hours of people at work. And currently, we have seventeen members of the board, our membership roster. And we voted yesterday in the meeting to maintain this seventeen and to keep the same officers currently. Elvis Allen is our chairman, Sandra Jones is our vice chairman, Sherry Archer is our secretary, and Dan Keaton is our chief. And we're gonna keep those. Now, the state allows us to have up to twenty-five members. And currently, like I say, we have seventeen. We're trying to maintain kind of consistency numberwise between the four precincts. And currently, we're out of sync a little bit, and so we're trying to find, I may throw this at me if somebody like behind somebody, but we need two or three people out of precinct three, if we can, to get on our commission. Currently, there's four in precinct one, five in precinct two, two in precinct three, and six in precinct four. And we have three people that we would like to bring on to the board and we'll discuss later about that, but none of them are in precinct three, so it's skewed the thing even more. So we're, we're looking for people in precinct three that would love to be on the historical commission and love history, so that's my.
Okay. So when, so right now, we're approving the ones that were already started.
Yes, same officers as we had this past year and the same people who are on the board.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Milton. Is there any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number seventeen, discuss and consider approve engagement letter with Patello Brown and Hill LLP to audit the financial statements of Van Zandt County for year ending September thirtieth, 2020. Ms. Hill, did you want to address the court? This is.
Judge, commissioners, this is just our annual engagement letter that is required by Patello Brown and Hill. They will be auditing our year ending September thirtieth, 2020. If you turn to page seven, you will see that our interim field work has been moved from April to March and our audit report will be issued in May as opposed to June. So that's a good thing for the county. We'll have our year-ending fund balances before we actually begin our audit for our budgeting for 2022 this year. And on page eight, it says that the cost will not exceed $39,200. And that's a good thing because this year, we are required, we went over the threshold on both the federal and the state side. So we will have two additional audits inside of our annual county audit, so.
If you go over that threshold, you have those, you have those, a single audit.
Yes.
And so we'll.
And I have, I do not know, last year, we had to do this all by portal. They were not able to attend the camp, to come to the county because of the pandemic. They have not made a, made aware to me if they'll be able to come in person this year or we will continue to do it through the portal. We didn't have any issues last year with it, so it, there was, it worked smoothly, whichever.
I thought it worked a lot better. I thought that, that was smooth. And I, and I think they had the same information. They called, they asked Sandy for the information, she uploads it, sends it to them. They sat down there and they get right back. I just thought it worked a lot smoother last year. And then they, they do a great job. They've done a great job since they've been allowed back. Any questions for Sandy?
Some move, Pearson.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the engagement letter with Patello Brown and Hill. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion for Sandy? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eighteen, discuss and consider commissioner liaison with department slash office holders. This is a list that you guys are aware of. Our department heads and elected officials. We have two commissioners over each one of them so that if there's a problem in that department or with an individual, the commissioners go, they address it, they sit down and see if they can work it out prior to, or any other issues, if not just problems. So who put, who put this together? You did, okay. What, what changes are on this, other than removing?
The changes over here, you know, Commissioner LaPrada now is taking over the duties of Commissioner Brown and Moore. He's, we switched some around, but he will take over those duties.
Okay, so putting LaPrada and Brown in, okay.
Plus, plus there've been a few switched out that Commissioner LaPrada requested.
Okay.
It's a good thing, it's a good thing for the department heads and elected officials to know that they can certainly come to us, the liaison commissioners, and try to talk some problems and maybe work it out before it comes to the full court.
So you make a motion to approve that list?
I make a motion that we approve it and also that you send it out to all the department heads and elected officials.
Okay. Be sure to mention that to Christie if we need to, if it proved that it needs, she needs to send it out to her.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Milton, second by Commissioner Pearson to approve the liaison list and have the county judge's office send it to all department heads and officers. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nineteen, discuss and consider adding county policy 1A-1.2 civil rights policy. All right, good morning.
Well, I'm lovely here at the Department of Human Resources Department. I'm gonna view this as a policy concerning civil rights. If you're on the right of policy due to a position held in the district attorney's office, the position is under a grant by the state for the victim's disability coordinator. For the state to be funding this position, they require civil rights policy here at county. The district attorney, John Curry, has reviewed and heard this policy, so please take a moment to consider it.
Okay. You have a copy of it? Okay. Is there any questions for Chloe? Any questions or discussions?
Make a motion we approve adding the county policy 1A-12 civil rights policy to the invoice.
Got a motion by Commissioner Milton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any, being none, all in favor, say aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Great job, Chloe. Item number twenty, discuss and consider a resolution authorizing precinct two county commissioners sign all invoices, certifications, and any other necessary documentation related to the Texas State Soil and Water Conservation Program. Virgil, this is.
Judge, commissioner, this is reversed back to the repair on our dams. As you know, right now, we're about to complete all the work on 135C. That's basically off of six, FM 1651. We're, they're almost done with that and the court has allowed me to take care of that grant on that one. And so I'm just, this is a motion letting me to take care of the grant information on 136 and 129.
Yeah.
It's, it saves a lot of work.
It does.
You know, it's pretty intense, but you just gotta stay with it.
Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner West. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner LaPrada, any questions or discussion?
The only thing is, the payments will still be ran through the auditor's office.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
I just don't want, there's nothing against you. I don't want any one of us to piss them.
I can't sign off on anything.
No money.
No money.
But I just saw Jim voices, that threw me off, that's great.
And it, it does, you're familiar with the projects, they're in their free zone and everything, so.
That's great.
Yeah. Any other questions? Being none, all in favor of designating Virgil Milton to sign the invoices on this Texas Soil and Water Commission Conservation Program, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-one, discuss and consider appointing Janet Holmes as our consultant with M&amp;E Consultants LLC and the contracting estimates involving flood control, structural repair for sites 129 and 136 dams.
Judge, commissioners, Janet Holmes was appointed our consultant in the contracting agency on dam site 135C. She's done an excellent job and she's willing to take over 136 and 129. So I highly recommend her as to be the consultant with the M&amp;E Consulting.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Milton. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-two, discuss and approve Texas County Lateral Road and Bridge Expenditure yearly report for the fiscal year ending September the thirtieth, 2020. Ms. Hill, would you like to address the court on that?
Judge, commissioner, I placed in your book the actual report that will be submitted that I've signed with all the documentation behind it. All this is, is I have to report to the state each year, total expenditures for all four precincts. We break it down into your road and bridge material line, which is shown as county road maintenance. For all four precincts, this year, we spent a total of $30,211,320. The other road expenditures is your personnel, your fuel, your repair maintenance, any equipment you purchase, any equipment payments you have to make. Those expenditures total is $383,817. Our total amount of expenditures for all four precincts is $65,95,000. And I did, you can see the fact where I broke down the total expenditures for precincts here. And this is the name of the report that has to be filed. Okay, now, again, a leisure.
I'm following Texas. Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Is that report go text on?
No, this report goes to the county government. This is part of the reporting that generates your lateral road money that you get.
Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I thought there would be a little discussion as to who's gonna get the most money, but. Item number twenty-three, discuss and consider county judge signature for pro rata tobacco settlement distribution, county expenditure settlement and hospital expenditure statement for calendar year 2020. We've been doing this for several years. That's one of those like the opioid, remember when the tobacco settlement and everything hit? It's money that the county receives, been going down every month, though, I mean, every year. Been, it's been decreasing, but it, that's what this is, is for me to assign to get that, those funds. Ms. Hill, you want to address the court on that?
The expenditure, the expenditure we report come from. Uh, the expenditure, the expenditure we report come from our D and M department for murder, uh, it includes our salary and the unran healthcare services that we provide to the county citizens. And it also includes the county expenses at the jail for any of the inmate jail gear. So this year, we have expenditures of four hundred and fifty thousand eight hundred and five dollars. Uh, that's compared to our full last year's expenditure, uh, it's already probably about three fifty. So he is, uh, that don't get you up to, he's going with about eighty-five hundred dollars in that last year.
Yeah.
It's a very small percentage coming back, but it's something that we didn't have.
That's right. So is there, is, is there a motion? To allow me to sign the pro rata tobacco settlement distribution expenditure? Got a motion by Commissioner Melton, is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any other questions or discussion for Sandy on the tobacco settlement? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I want to say in that, there is a, and I've told my clerk, there's a lot of signatures, there's a lot of information in here, so at the end of the meeting, I won't be just signing and passing and stuff, because I'll never get it all back together, we're going to have to keep this book together, uh, on the dams and stuff and everything. Yeah, but, uh, make sure my, uh, Christie has copies, I'll, I'll give the book to her, but there's a tremendous, a lot of information in this meeting. Item number twenty-four, discuss and consider payment on invoices of D and M Contractors LLC. Sandy, do you want to address the court on that, or with, or, or Ms. Lepred?
No, I asked this one here, this invoice was done back before I took office and we had the O-bond. So Sandy didn't, before it was processed with the P.O., and it's also going to apply for that twenty-five percent line of many young persons.
Okay. Now, D and M Contractors was given two letters. They have received two letters, one from Freddie and one from Sandy, Freddie Thomas, our, uh, prior, uh, auditor, to D and M. Do not deliver any product without a P.O. We tell our vendor, do not deliver to keep us out of this very situation right here. And, uh, uh, but they did, that, but they have been in receipt of two letters not to do this, but they did, ones for, uh, ones for thirteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-four dollars and ones for twenty-one thousand and fifty-four dollars. You've got outgoing, I mean, Mr. Lepred come in and we have a, we have it set up where the department heads are not to spend, if they're outgoing, they're not to spend over twenty-five percent of their budget. They're here for twenty-five.
Per line item.
Per line, per line item. And, and so, for whatever reason, then this is going to send, uh, I guess Brandon, uh, over the twenty-five percent, but these purchases are made without a purchase order and then you get notified after the new, uh, elected official comes into office. So it's up for discussion.
When Brandon left office, he had seventy-four point three zero left in his road and bridge line. Uh, the purpose of, uh, purchase, the purchase order system is so that what, that my office came onto the budget. And as you can see, when you choose to go out and make a purchase and not follow the purchase order guidelines that this court has set up, uh, when we apply those two invoices to the disingur expense statement, it drops that line to sixty-nine point four three percent. Now, your policy states that the, if the outgoing official is going to go, uh, over the twenty-five percent, he needs to come to court, he is permissioned. So the correct procedure would have been Brandon come to court and got permission from the court, and he sealed coated a road and he's not changed. And I believe Commissioner Lepred has been looking at the work, has been completed. Now, when you apply those two invoices, his total overall budget went to seventy-seven point six two. So he didn't overhaul that over his budget, which was what the policy used to say in the past, that he should usually set in about a percent, and then this year, y'all changed it to the line. But, um, I did go back and pull, um, the, the bid, when we sent out the bid packet, it does talk about purchase orders. Uh, it is very plain in the bid packet that you have to have a purchase order of anything over five hundred dollars, and the first order has to appear on the invoice. And then I pulled the terms of termination default, if a company, uh, doesn't apply with everything that's in the budget within the bid packet, you can default. Now, I did call and talk to Ms. Perry, Ms. Attorney, and you know, it's like she and I talked about, I pulled the packet and this particular vendor is the only company that did not read packet to do seal coating for Van Zet County. And it is a very reasonable price, so if you, the, if you want to go through the termination default with D and M Contractors, then you're going to be looking at getting copies from Dallas to Houston and your prices are going to go up and it's going to cost a taxpayer a lot more money. So, you know, my recommendation, possibly you either bring D and M Contractor again and make him understand, you know, if you do this again, the court's not going to pay your bills, or, um, or you're writing a letter. I mean, apparently my, the auditor's office doesn't overlook that to be an contractor, because I, uh, Mr. Thomas wrote in the letter in two thousand and sixteen, we had this happen again in two thousand and eighteen, I wrote in the letter, and then when these deals came in, I sent an email to D and M asking for a purchase order. Uh, I feel like the county's going to have to pay the bills because we, uh, an elected official didn't make the slot for the, the work has been completed, but, um, as to how you want to handle the vendor, that will be a court's decision.
I'd say turn that over to, to Commissioner Lepred and let him deal with the vendor.
Well, I, I've got a comment. This should not happen whether you're an outgoing commissioner or not, we should not spend this money without a P.O. My suggestion, uh, would be going in the future, Sandy, when we go into the agreements with these vendors, there should be something stated there that, uh, if, if something's ordered without a P.O., and when it's paid, there'll be a ten percent penalty or something, that way that will get not only this vendor, but all them vendors in, in line, that they know if, if, if I call them and ask them to do something and I don't provide them with a P.O., then they're, they're going to be liable for possibly ten percent of that. And, and that will also keep all of us in line, so that there's, there's not too much to say.
Will I check with, uh, with counsel and make sure that it's a legal?
Make sure we can do that. That's a good idea, though.
I'm not sure if anybody could get on your...
Yeah, yeah.
No, I mean, it's not, all it's doing is, whenever we make a, an agreement with somebody, they're going to say, okay, I need your P.O. number, and it's going to force us to get them their P.O. number. It's going to make us take care of business, is what it's going to do. It's not, once they got that P.O. number, they're going to be good to go. And most of them do that right now, most of them, if we do anything big, they ask you, what's your P.O. number? If we do anything over five hundred dollars, they say, well, I need that number. Because it states on there that the P.O. number will be on the, on the...
Invoices.
On the invoices.
It wouldn't bother me to bring them in. And, and, and you, you bring them in and you, and, and make the company stand here and ask for the money, uh, and have to explain, why did you deliver the product without a P.O. number? And when they have to come in here and stand before the commissioners' court and we show the two letters and, uh, and everything, then they have to stand there. I mean, we can sit here and try to work it out, but they're sitting out there right now, uh, I mean, I...
Look, I, I don't want to make, I don't want to make D and M angry at us here, because they're the only ones that do seal coating, and I do a lot of seal coating. So let's try to work this thing out immediately between the commissioner of, of, that's involved here, I mean, you know?
I hear you, I just, I, I just, I believe when you received two letters and you did anyhow, you knew.
Well, third time's the charm. I think that we should write them a letter, another letter.
Well, I don't think it should have come from Sandy, I think it should have come from the commissioners' court this time.
And stay in there that if your invoice will not be paid if you deliver with that P.O.
But if you're going to say that, you have to stand behind it.
I agree, I agree.
I mean, I think they've already had that letter twice, haven't they?
What, what did the letter say?
And unfortunately, they're the victim, they, you know, I like for people to trust me and D and M trusted somebody.
Yeah.
On September seventeenth, two thousand and nineteen, I sent D and M an email that stated, "Good afternoon, please find a attached partial copy of our hand packet that covers Van Zet County's purchasing policy. It states a purchase order shall be generated by Van Zet County to the successful bidders for all purchases that total five hundred dollars or more. The purchase order number must appear on all itemized invoices and packing steps. Van Zet County will not be held responsible for any order placed slash delivered without a valid current purchase order number. Road and Bridge Precinct Number One has pretended to follow invoices to the auditor's office for payment approval without purchase. Number five three five, in the amount of seventeen thousand forty-one dollars. Number five three seven, in the amount of eight thousand three hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Number five three eight, in the amount of nine thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars. Number five three nine, in the amount of seventeen thousand two hundred and sixty-six dollars. And number five four O, fifteen thousand one thirty-three, and five four one, eight thousand six ninety-seven. We appreciate your visit from Van Zet County, however, we do need to remind you that a purchase order in the future will be required for payment use rate. And Brandon did have to fill out the nasty grant, which I'll all, I'll go through, uh, and, and he gets attached to all these invoices as to why he made those purchases without purchase orders.
What does he say?
Uh, Brandon was on vacation at that time, and I might have looked, I'm remembering this, Brandon was on vacation and his woman was on vacation, and he had, that was with the guardian man over there that was doing some road work at the end of year, you know, now everybody's trying to scramble and get all their money spent in September, and the person that did all this ordering said he was unaware of the purchase order policies.
So let me ask you, Mr. Lepred, you think you can get that point across to them?
I'm going to have to talk with them.
I mean, I don't...
I don't know if we order seal coats without P.O., I understand the purpose of the program.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's whether or not they'll, they'll Virgil them.
Yeah.
Do you, I mean...
The problem that D and M tells me is you have women working in the office that do the invoicing, but that the, 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 when the guys from the barn would call, they would call drivers, in order for the product, where the drivers are just taking the product. And then the women, it, then the guys, the drivers would send what they've delivered to the women in the office and they go one day. So, you know, that, that's where the problem hang in, is that the formant at precinct one was calling the drivers correctly and ordering the product. And, uh, I mean, they're out there trying to fix the road, they're not worried about P.O. I mean, I get that, but still, we have the policies in place, and as you can see, there's a reason why.
Yeah.
Um, I, you know, used to, products weren't ordered by the, used to all products go ordered by the administrative assistant y'all have.
Yeah.
And that alleviated any of this problem, but for some reason, uh, now the formant's saying to order what they need, so you kind of let your control get out a little bit. Used to the administrative assistant order everything to ensure those purchase orders are products, so. I think we'll need to take a step back and look at the order process to ensure, and we don't have this, this...
This is an isolated case, really.
I mean, everyone's probably having some of those.
Yeah, yeah.
But it, for the most part, everybody in Van Zet County, all part of the fly of the earth.
Okay. I'd entertain a motion. Would you, you want to make a motion? We hadn't vouched them?
No, I don't believe Commissioner Lepred's on it yet.
I agree.
And the court is to sign off on the bill.
Yeah. Yeah, pay him. Okay. And, 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 that, that your motion, okay?
And Judge, I did call this current statement of expense this morning, and bridge of the eight, with the bills that we are pretty good at, he still has seventy-four percent overall budget left for stealing, so.
I don't, I don't mind contacting D and M and telling them, hey, if any one of us orders anything, you need to, before you do the work, you need to get that P.O.
When you say, uh, you, you're talking like you personally?
Me personally, I don't mind contacting them and explaining to them.
Okay.
I don't mind talking to them.
Okay.
I, I don't know how well Chad knows them, I don't mind calling Dean and telling them.
Okay. Okay.
It's a good time to meet you. It's a good time to meet you.
So your motion was to go ahead and approve the payment of these two invoices, correct? Okay, and that was your second, Virgil?
Yes, sir.
Okay, any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried, and I would love for each one of you to call.
Well...
And get that, get that point across.
Chad and I'll get together, that would be a good time later to introduce Dean's on, and, and we'll rack them over the calls and go on.
Okay. Item number twenty-five, discuss and consider approving legacy states plat in precinct three.
Yes, sir, uh, court, this is a, uh, a new subdivision that's, uh, being proposed. Mr. Melton and I looked at it yesterday, it's a nineteen lot subdivision, uh, with all, with the exception of one lot is over, uh, one acre and one lot is exactly one acre, and it meets all of our requirement, we've got, uh, commitment letters on sewer water and electricity, I make a motion, we accept, uh, this plat.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Pearson, is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Commissioner Melton. Is there going to be, uh, is this the one that's signed or the Milo?
No, no.
Okay, I'm thinking, I don't want this and...
No, no.
Okay.
You can sign it.
No, I'm thinking, there's going to be more than this, file with the clerk's office. Okay.
But I, I do have one thing, though.
Okay.
We need to stay on these, uh, people, uh, and make sure that they turn in a checkoff list with, with, with things, too, because we got it, we need that checkoff list, even though they may, uh, attach something to that checkoff list, like where the water's coming from or whatever, but we need to see that checkoff list.
Yeah, there's a letter, and they're from, uh, our home site sewer.
That's right.
Yeah, we have.
Yeah, it's there, yeah.
And on this one, there is a letter from South to Waukegan Water Supply Corporation saying they're, they're, they're supplying the water.
Yeah.
That's a letter from Trinity Valley, South Waukegan, and the fire marshal's office.
Yeah.
Commitment letter.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number... Item number twenty-six, discuss and consider approving a replat of Lot thirteen B, Block one of the Wheels Estate.
Yes, sir. This is an old edition, now eastern Will Point, Twin Will Point Edgewood. And Lot thirteen B is a thirteen plus acre lot. What they're asking to do here is divide that into two one point five plus acre lots. There's no structure on on thirteen B at this time. Everything appears to be good on it. They're just making it two smaller, two smaller lots other than one three acre lot. I make a motion, we accept. Thirteen B will change to thirteen B one and thirteen B two.
I make a motion, we approve.
Okay, have motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion for Keith? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-seven, discuss and consider approval of twenty twenty-one budget amendments. You have, you have the budget amendments before you? Is there a motion to approve? Got a motion by commissioner to approve the budget amendments. Is there a second? Got a second by Commissioner LaPrad. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-eight, discuss and consider approval of December twenty twenty financial and investment report of county treasurer to be entered into the minutes of commissioner's court. Is there a motion to be to approve the December twenty twenty financial investment report?
Tell me.
Second. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Melton. Any question or discussion for Kenny? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number twenty-nine, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices and departments of county government and approval entry, same in the court's minutes matter record. Mr. West? Did you have any comments you would like to make?
Last meeting of the month, we got all reports in for one. And it it will be in maybe so they're they're having a lot of problems. They will there. I have it in. They're just, they're still finding that.
Okay. Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
I got a motion to approve the monthly reports. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pearson. Any other questions, discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. We will now enter into executive session, closed executive session at ten thirty-three. And we will reconvene to open session as soon as the closed session is over.